I would say between 11:30 and 12 is when we should get there because we usually try and do lunch before the big crowd gets there, so yeah. Yeah, because I haven't seen it since any of that stuff is, yeah. No, I'm excited. I'm excited. Yeah, they were making a joke that they were gonna miss having to go out in the trailer and wash dishes. And they're like, oh, there's even a coffee maker, because you know, a lot of the people ask for coffee. So they were like, no, there's a coffee maker in the kitchen and... Yeah, and see, I've got it home, because my husband ordered them through CBC. We've got like four of those, you know, the little things that you can put, the insulated things that you can put the coffee in, so yeah. I hope not. I wouldn't think so, not based on what we got, but you never know. Okay, Mary, I'm gonna show you the latest. Oh, yeah, I can't do anything without mine.
Oh, I can. After I put them on in the morning, I'm looking at little big numbers.
Oh, my little sassy pants. No, that's how she does. That is how she does.
Little baby legs and arms. She is a little model in her house.
Yeah, I mean, that's just imprimat for her.
Is she?
Yeah.
She is sorry.
She's trying to break me with his little... I'll break you one more.
No.
About this to possibly get it back in front of y'all and the planning commission for a possible relook at it. And I said, well, to me, it sounds like drainage, drainage, and drainage. So I suggested Mike talk to an engineer and get a firm engineering report together that would show where the water is going, where it's not going, how it would affect the neighbors or not affect the neighbors. So in a way, they're here asking for this through my advice, I guess you could say. But just to reiterate the facts or the summary of it was that there was no contest or no issue with the actual zoning to multifamily. It was all about drainage and possibly some answers could be had by having a study on it. And that's where we're at. If this were something y'all want to consider, you have to have a two thirds vote, basically, of the council to bring it back.
Personally, I asked to come to one council meeting to know that drainage is an issue on every property brought up. Everybody asks what's going to do to drainage. And so that shouldn't be a surprise to anybody requesting a bill or something.
May I say something?
I was going to ask you one question real quick before you step back. Had y'all ever talked about that in the initial process about drainage? Because I'm sure he understands that. He's built several other units over there.
I'm sure. We had some initial, but it wasn't a real deep conversation about it. I mean, not really to answer the question, not a big, long conversation about, yes, you need to really show drainage. I mean, it was, well, I take that back a little bit because the neighbors did come visit with it.
I was going to say the neighbors had even come.
So yes, I had to tell the applicants that they really need to take a look at that.
I mean, he kind of knew where the conversation was going that night and didn't offer suggestions.
May I say one thing? Typically, we address all these drainage issues during the site plan review process. And that the city street, planning, everybody has their chance to tell us what they'd like us to do. And basically, it's all of it's by ordinance. So the rules are out there. Here's what you got to do. Usually, don't have to provide any kind of a drainage analysis until you get to that point. So the rezoning portion is typically, we never, really, never look at the drainage at that point. But then when we get to the development review, we look at it then and we deal with the street department. And we have to detention storage. And that detention, well, like I was telling you, the post-development storm water flow rate will be less than or equal to the pre-development. So he could have a situation if you guys, you know, with the detention on site that's required by ordinance.
That leads to a different question then. I agree. By ordinance states what right, then what was the issue that night?
That's what I don't understand. That's where I'm confused.
And really, I mean, with the work you did, to me, almost seems, like I say, kind of carp for the horse. Because if our ordinance states what has to be done, now, what happens, though? What happens, though? I mean, if, we can what if something does happen, I've done this for 15 years, Mary. You know, if we grant rezoning, and then this property or any property, if it turns out you can't manage the water flow, then what happens? Are they allowed to build and just tough luck? Are they not allowed to build because the water flow can't be managed? How does that work, Brian?
And that was the question that I was asking.
And they'll have to build to the ordinance. I think there was maybe some questions and concerns by the council the night that this was looked at. And Finley had spoke on it a little bit. And there was some concern, I guess, because our ordinance may not have been strong enough. But every development out there these days gets developed under the ordinance that we have in hand. So, I mean, it is within your bounds to deny rezoning based on any fact that you think is detrimental to the neighborhood, whether it's pollution or water or traffic or whatever. So it's definitely within your bounds to make the call on it one way or the other. But I think there were some questions and concerns on the part of whether the ordinance was strong enough, basically, to not flood the neighbors.
I remember it more being a city issue than necessarily the developer, that we don't have the resources to go out there and clean out the ditches and do a lot of the work.
The issue was the...
Saying that they would be willing to do it.
That's what I was going to say. The issue at the time was the neighbors, or some of the neighbors, were opposed to it. Has that opinion changed? Would you like to speak? Are you, I'm sorry, Mr. Patrick, are you through?
Yeah.
Come on up, Rodney.
Thank you. For those who forgot who I am, Rod Pearson, 2620 Bruce Street, and my neighbor, Marcus Malpia, who lives directly behind me on West Martin Street. And to reiterate for those who weren't here last time, in general, we are not opposed to a rezoning of the property under consideration. Okay? That's fine. But because there's already a drainage problem on that block that has only gotten worse because of other developments to the east of the 2600 block, it is now really crucial to prevent it from getting worse. And that's really what we're interested in, to keep it from getting worse. Because every time you pour concrete and driveways, the water has to go someplace. And in this case, it goes to West Martin Street. And West Martin Street is unimproved. We have 12, 14 foot of wide blacktop, open ditches with 12 inch pipes going into the storm drains on Hubbard, 12 inches. And they're half full of dirt. Now, water is going to go someplace. And if it can't go where you want it to go, it's going to go where it wants to go, which is going to be primarily onto Marcus's property, and then right directly behind onto my property. And my property is flooding on a regular basis. I don't need an engineering report to tell you, water will find its own level, and it will go to the lowest point. And that's my property. On the 29th of April, I had a foot of water in my driveway. My crawl space was underwater. The siding was underwater. Marcus had water in the ditches to where his whole yard was flooded. So the problem already exists. It's not that we anticipate it's going to exist. We anticipate it's going to get worse. Okay? The only thing we're asking the city is to ensure that it doesn't get worse, that we will not be adversely affected by this development. It's not an issue of yes or no for the development. Okay? Now, I would like to share my insight with you, and I would like to sensitize you to this. I have been neighbors to the Massey property for over 30 years. Mark has been neighbors with the Masseys for 17 years. And I like to think I can speak for him. They're not going to do anything that you're not going to make. I can promise you that. They will do nothing that you're not going to hold their feet to the fire. If they say, oh, we'll do that, you might as well write that on a piece of paper, blot it up, and throw it away. I'm telling you, I have 30 years' experience with them. Now, I don't know what ordinance governs this. I have to rely on Mr. Finley Vincent and his expertise to make sure that our properties are not further adversely impacted. And I have to rely on the city to make sure it's done properly. That's the only recourse I have at this point. So all we ask is that you consider this and make sure whatever is promised will be done, and that it will not aggravate the drainage problem that already exists. Now, I'm not a city engineer, but I like to think that, you know, there are some improvements that could be made there on the 2600 block of West Martin Street. Mark, you want to say anything? All right, folks, thank you very much. Please.
Rodney, what is the street that is just east of your home?
That's Dennison.
Dennison, thank you.
Dennison is very interesting that you mentioned Dennison, because the block of Dennison between West Martin and Bruce is very new. About 15, 16, 17 years ago, there was a rezoning request by Massey Properties for the northeast corner of the 2600 block that I live on. And there were several issues, not just drainage. Drainage was one of them, but egress was a big problem at that point, if you may recall. And at that time, the city stipulated that before zoning could be allowed, Dennison had to be improved in order to afford enough egress from these apartments. Because otherwise, everything would have went right down West Martin Street, right in front of the daycare. And as I recall, we, this gentleman that owns that property, we were on the same sheet of music at that time. And the city made Massey Properties improve Dennison between West Martin and Bruce. If they can build 225 or 250 feet of city street, why can't we make them responsible for improving the drainage properly there? It's going to serve their property. It's not going to serve my property. You know, it's going to be part of their development, not mine. That's the only issue. You know, get the water where it needs to go and not flood the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney.
If I remember correctly, and Brian, you may remember, we can't put any conditions on rezoning from West Martin. So it's either...
Well, I'm only going by the experience of 15, 17 years ago. You know, there was an open concrete lined ditch that had to be built. There were some privacy fences that had to be built, all prior to the city giving permission for this. You know, it's up to you to grant this rezoning or not. And back then, you know, Massey was made to put in the concrete ditch, the privacy fences, and improved Dennison. And everybody was happy.
Could that...
And they did it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
There must have been conditional use.
Yeah.
I'd like to say one more thing, just in ending here with my part. Stormwater detention is required by the city of Conway. In the stormwater detention ordinance, it talks about, you know, we can't let any more water off the site than we could before construction. So the post, like I said, the flow rate after construction is going to be equal to or less than before construction. Now, if there's an existing problem out there, who's responsible for it? You know, Mr. Massey, in my eyes, he's developed a lot of that out there, but is he responsible for what's in the city right of way? I don't know. That's maybe a question for the city attorney. But Mr. Finley can attest that we do stormwater detention on most of the sites in Conway now. And we won't make the problem any worse than it is right now. I can guarantee you that.
It won't be any worse than what it is.
That's right.
It's already a problem.
That's right.
So in other words, you're saying y'all are not required to fix anything?
It's in the city street right of way, is my...
Okay, never mind.
That's only, if we can get in the right of way and, you know...
We can only make them do so much with the ordinance.
That's what I'm saying. In other words, he's not going to do anything.
They're going to do that.
Well, I'm not, I can't answer for Mr. Massey. But I would say that would be, there's a lot of places in Conway that have existing drainage issues. And the developers are typically not required to fix the existing drainage issue. They're required not to put any more water off their property after they pave it and put rooftops in than what was there before, than what was going off the property before. So...
This is a good example of what happens in a lot of places in Conway, especially older parts, where previously standards weren't as rigid, if there were any standards at all. And so then standards got improved. And, you know, a good example, you may have had a 12 inch pipe. Now, it calls for a 16 inch pipe, but still flows into 12 inch pipe. So, you know, it doesn't do a whole lot of good necessarily.
Probably until that gets all rebuilt.
Yeah. I mean, it's just a problem of, it's just something that's happened. And, you know, other than going in, somebody going in, the city, the developer, somebody going in there and replacing some of the little stuff, I mean, who's going to pay for it? That's the question. And ultimately, once it's, whether it's been a long time ago or now, once the developer does it to city standards, turns over to the city, it's our responsibility. But it becomes our responsibility.
Exactly. Exactly. Does Finley have anything to add, or?
I don't do well in front of people, so just bear with me. Okay?
Stan, if you would.
My name is Stan Stapleton. I own 364, my wife and I, 364 and 375 Dennison. Tina's back there with my wife. We've been there 25 years. And the flooding that exists, Marcus and Rod, Rod, Mr. Pearson, it does exist on the south side of Martin. No, we're on the north side of Martin. And we're not asking to approve tonight to rezonate. We're just asking to be able to bring up the due process so that we can come back to y'all. And then we can show the full, or wherever, just went. But Mr. McGee, but that way, we can show the full plan before we rezonate. Now, I have pictures. I wasn't expecting everybody to get up and speak tonight. But I've got pictures of the north side and the south side ditches. Like Mr. Hawkins said, south of Martin, the culverts, you can't even see them. I myself was out there on 729. It was the week after we had come in front of the city council. And I was shooting elevations, just for me. I'm a plumber. That's not out of my realm. Now, I'm no engineer. But I was shooting elevations, and Marcus come up. What are you doing? I said, well, I told him what I was doing. I've known Marcus 25 years. I am actually his daughter's godfather. I do not want to put, I don't want to cause him any grief with any water. If I thought there was any chance, I wouldn't even sell the property. I offered to clean out his culverts for him then. I said, I'll bring a mini X out. He has a dump truck. We'll call one call. I mean, this is, this is not out of my realm. We'll shoot them out. We'll get you some drainage going. He said, no, Stan, that's the city's job. I tried. I tried to help you. But what I'm asking for is for y'all to pass this so that we can get back on the agenda. Because once we get the project done, we're going to alleviate some of his problems. But our water, the water that's north of Martin, never goes to the south of it. I can show y'all pictures of culverts, if you want to see them, that are clogged up. I can show you their side of the ditch and my side of the ditch. And I was out there when we had 4.1 inches of rain, when we had a flash flood warning. That's when I was taking the pictures. Do y'all want me to? Or is it necessary?
Sure, bring them all up.
Okay. That is on their side of the road. There's a culvert right there that is completely buried on inlet side, outlet side's coming out. Now, that was just, that was when the flash flood warning. I went ahead and screenshotted. Now, that's my side. That is the north side of the ditch. We retain no water.
Pretty great.
I mean, I'm just trying to get so that we can get back on the agenda.
Here's, if y'all want to see that.
Yeah, we'll pass them back.
But I've been there 20, like I said, we've had that daycare 25 years. And we've never had flooding on our side of the street. And the water does not go across Martin. Now, there is a relief culvert on a 45 degree angle that lets water on his side, when it comes up south side of Martin, it comes to the north to actually alleviate it. But if they would allow us, I believe, once we go back in front of the council with all of our evidence, I think we'll actually alleviate a lot of their problem. But, and I would be happy to clean out his ditches for you. But I'm not allowed. So, thank y'all.
Would anyone else like to speak for or against Mr. Vincent?
Yeah, I can't help myself. I'd just like to clarify that it's not the city's responsibility to clean out driveway culverts. It's the responsibility of the owner of the driveway. We have a responsibility to maintain drainage. And so if there is a culvert that is clogged, we can remove it. But most of the time, we try to help property owners out wherever we can and give them some time to alleviate the situation. But we can't fix every broken driveway culvert in town. We would never finish that job. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I used to do some business at the aforementioned daycare. I used to pick up a little one there. And at the intersection of West Martin and Dennison, my memory told me, because here's what we heard at the last meeting, is that water drains to the north. And that's not what my mind told me. So I went back to take a look at it. And there's no way that water goes to the north from that intersection. I don't think there's any way, which puts it back on y'all's property. So that's, that's what I remember about that night.
That's exactly right.
Right.
I'd like to say one more thing. We did do a topographic survey of the site that Mr. Massey's looking at developing. And half of it drains through the ditch in question north of, what was the name? Dennison? Is that Dennison Street? Martin Street. Half of that site drains through there, and the other half goes between the assisted living. I think the assisted living has like a track over there, and then some old part of their building there, there's, the other half of it goes that way. So in all, it's about 2.4, so almost 2.8 acres. So about half of it goes, doesn't even go through this ditch that in question. But, you know, it's not a whole lot of drainage area, the drainage basin, that ditch, the amount of area that it drains. The culverts are smaller. They were 18 and 15 inch in those driveways. There is room for them to back up a little bit, which is good from a drainage standpoint, allows it to kind of, it's kind of like detention in a way. So I didn't see a whole lot of major issues with the drainage out there. Now, I did notice that these gentlemen here, Mr. Pearson, Mr. Malpia, that their lots were flat. And one of them, his driveway, kind of slopes towards his house from the street. We tried to do some topographic, sent our survey crew out there, and they were asked to leave. We were wanting to try to see if we could find a solution to this problem. And, you know, again, like Mr. Grimes said, it's kind of the carp for the horse in my mind. Now, with all due respect, I mean, all this is addressed during the site plan review typically. So to put it on y'all's plate is atypical, I guess you'd say. And if y'all have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Well, you know, this rule about the one-year waiting period, I'm sorry. The one-year waiting period rule was really put in to not bog down the planning department and us with over, over, over the same request. But really, it was put in to protect the neighbors from having to go through the ordeal over and over and over. Now, Mr. Malpia, Mr. Pearson, I don't want to put you on the spot, but it sounds like either next year or next month, if we waive it, it's going to come back up. So, question is, you know, we don't have hundreds of, sometimes we had hundreds of people in convenience by doing this. You know, here we've got two people that have spoken, maybe some more. You know, if you don't, if it doesn't happen now, it's going to happen a year from now. So the question is, is there any sense of waiting? If you want to speak to that, sure. If not, that's fine, too. You know, all we're really, we're going to come back to the same point, though, next month or next year. Drainage is bad. Will this be worse? We have minimum city standards. That's all they have to meet. We'll have a nice plan. If it goes beyond, will it be met? We can't guarantee it. All we can guarantee is the minimum city standards because it's a rezoning. So again, that's the next issue again. The issue tonight, though, is whether to wait a month or a year. That's the issue. Y'all have any thoughts you want to share? And if you're not opposed to rezoning itself, we can address the drainage.
It comes down to one thing. Is the city going to take our concerns for valid and try to help us to keep from aggravating the situation worse? Or is the city going to be indifferent to our needs as property owners? That's really what it comes down to, you know? If development takes precedent over existing housing, you know, then I guess every homeowner established in Conway better watch out. We're not asking for anything unreasonable here.
I agree with that.
Okay?
I agree with that.
You know, yeah, driveway culverts are the property owner's responsibility. Drainage tiles are the city's responsibility. The ditches themselves are the city's responsibility. I agree with Marcus. You know, I wouldn't go out there and have somebody dig on the ditches. What if the city doesn't approve? I do make it a point, hard work to keep the drainage ditch on the east side of my property clean. Because Massey's doesn't do a thing to keep any ditches open. They don't, I've never seen them clean a pine needle one. Okay? I do it because it impacts me first and foremost. So I go out there, feel free to come by. Anytime, I'll be out there with a rake and barrels, keeping that ditch clean. Because I know I'm the first one that's going to suffer from it. Now, as far as this property, the way it drains north or south or east and west, point is, when you pour it solid with concrete and building, that water's going to go someplace. And it's going to go downhill to the lowest point. You know, to say that, well, you know, water doesn't go south, it goes north, you know, water on a leash? You know, it's going to go where it's slanted to. And unfortunately, that's going to be on Marcus and I. So unless we can get these ditches cleaned out to where the water that comes off of this development will drain properly without impacting us, you know, folks, I'm sorry, you know, I'm, my home is the only thing that I own. It's the biggest investment. And I'm going to fight to preserve it. I promise you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I'm going to bring this back for the council now. Counsel, you have a request before you?
I have to point out one thing.
Yes, Mr. Patrick.
And this is the zoning technicality thing, because it was mentioned earlier about the property on the corner with conditions. Another alternative, whether you want to entertain it or not, it's up to you. That was done with a multifamily two zoning with a conditional use to allow multifamily three. So there's another alternative. If you wanted to look at the zoning, it doesn't have to be a straight up multifamily three zoning. It could be a multifamily two with a conditional use. That way, you could put conditions on it. Now, they could do an MF2, which would get them 24 units per acre, no, wait, 18 units per acre, and stop there. Or if they want to go further and get the density higher, which they did on the corner, then you could add a conditional use to that, too. And then you could place conditions on it to make it, you know, a better degree of storm water retention or street improvements, whatever you see fit, to put conditions on there that might help with the situation. I'll just point that out as another alternative that you could look at as part of the zoning, if you choose to look at zoning and conditional use again. If that makes sense, I'll be...
Like I originally said, we're not trying to rezonate tonight. We're trying to get an okay to bring it back in front of y'all with all of our paperwork. At that time, if y'all so wish, y'all can turn it down. But I feel like we should actually have the opportunity. Now, I went to sleep on the last meeting. I should have been here, but I wasn't.
But what's going to change from then, from now to then?
We're going to have, he's got the survey going. We're going to show where the water's going to go. He's going to have it all in paperwork. We're going to have a site plan. Do you want to explain that part of it? Because that's a little over my head.
Can you bring, call us a question? Can I call a question on this so we can go ahead?
Let me ask a quick question. Are you asking for the rezoning or Mr. Massey?
Mr. Massey is asking on my behalf. He asked my permission to do it, is what he's doing.
You're the property owner, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Because he was contingent as time when he came.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's fair.
Right.
I am actually the property owner. But we had went through planning commission with a 10 to 0 vote. And I figured, I just went to sleep. I figured it was a, because I don't normally do this. I'm getting a learning curve here.
Yeah. Planning commission makes a recommendation.
Yeah. But I'm learning, so bear with me. But we're just asking for the opportunity to bring it back up.
Okay, I'm going to bring this back to the council now. You have before you a request to allow this rezoning application to go back to start over with the planning commission.
You have before you a request to allow this rezoning application to go back to start over with the Planning Commission. What is your wishes?
Brian, when did this come up first time? Was it April or May?
It was July.
July.
It was still raining at that time. Never mind. Because it rained very shortly thereafter and that's when I went and see which way that water was going to go.
I make a motion to deny this request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny this request. Any further discussion?
I would actually be in favor of Brian's last suggestion. If they'll come back with conditional, with a rezon to MF2, the conditional use of MF3, we can put conditions on it. They have to fix some other stuff.
Is that what, so would they have to wait a year anyway if he's doing something totally different?
No.
No, we'd be giving him permission to come back with just that.
His neighbors are asking for approval on other property. This would allow that to happen. I think they'd be satisfied, more satisfied. We still don't have to prove it, but that'd be the track they go down.
But I guess the question is, is that still going to be doable for him?
Well, that's something he's outside.
Go to the MF2. So if that's not going to be doable, then.
Then he wouldn't ask, then he won't come back.
考虑到 since his zoning request was denied, don't they, even with the waiting period, they have to come back with something different?
I mean, that should be the idea.
Yeah, so it would have to be different anyway.
I think that, I think just by way of procedure, if, if you approve or don't, whatever they come back with has to be different.
It doesn't have to be, it could be the same zoning. It's just, there needs to be new evidence. There needs to be some reason why you should hear it again. It could be drainage or a new zone, so. There should be something new to bring to the table or there's no point, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny this request. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Garrett.
All right.
Make sure that this is to deny.
This is to deny.
So a yes vote is to deny?
Yes.
All in favor to deny this motion or this, uh, yeah, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
These hands. Give us some hands. All those in favor, yes? Okay, got it. Thank you.
If I under, about to stank, Rick, it would have taken six votes. You had to have six in favor.
To bring it back.
To bring it back, but it was a basically kind of a negative motion, so.
Yeah, it was. So the motion, the request failed. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rename a portion of Amity Road from the roundabout currently being constructed to East Dave Ward Drive. And the, uh, request is to name this Crane Drive. And we have an ordinance for this. It's ordinance O-17-104.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
We have a motion to waive the three readings? Anyone like a second? In a second. All in favor to waive the reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Waiting for a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval? Any further discussion?
Whereabouts did this come from? Why are we to rename it?
Well, and I'm wondering, should we rename it before we have a new Amity Road out there? It seems. Yeah, I mean, yeah, that seems a little weird.
Going here.
I think we do too. We did before.
Because of the car dealership we named.
Well, we're usually after the fact on these things, maybe like years. We had like four, um, tray lanes for a long time running and, and things like that. So we're trying to get proactive on, on the road renaming. Um, I mean, the ordinance could be crafted, I think, to say that when the other road opens, the name would shift. The idea is that basically Amity Road, and you can look on your, your report there, the, um, Amity Road's going to shoot from Lewis Crossing North to a new roundabout and eventually catch back up with current Amity. So there'll be a segment that is now existing Amity, running in front of Crane Car Dealerships that will need a new name. So proactively, we got in front of this one, I guess you could say, and, and seeking a new name. Because it won't be long, the other road will be constructed and, and ready. Do we have a time they think the road?
Well, what was that, would that back road be, why does that one have to be named Amity? Why couldn't it be?
Because it makes sense, because Amity comes up now by Sams, continues through the roundabout and goes. Because otherwise, Amity, you jig-jag down Dave Ward back up again.
This isn't Amity now?
That, that is.
Yeah.
The blue is currently Amity. That's the portion we want to change to Crane. Amity will shift to the west, to the, the extension of Amity that now goes through Lewis Crossing.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking, the new that's not built yet, doesn't have to be Amity Road.
It does not have to be, but I think it makes more sense.
I guess I think it makes more sense where it is.
To the south of that, is that, is that where Amity is?
That's not Amity anymore.
Y'all got the color version over there? Can I, can I come over there and look? Because I can't tell if it's black and white.
Come on.
Where, where Amity currently plugs into that first roundabout as you're traveling east, is no longer Amity.
So it's in the second roundabout that comes out the other day?
Correct.
Right, so Amity comes down here. That's the part that didn't make sense to me.
Because there's Crane Dealerships in front of it and we don't have a Crane. I mean, it could be any other name, but that is the name that was kind of picked out of the blue, I guess. The Crane people didn't petition it. It was something that basically the planning department and mayor's office, we just kind of came up with a name, we needed a name. But it doesn't have to be Crane.
Is that Amity Road goes through the first roundabout, comes over to the second roundabout, and then goes over into where Sams is?
Well, that's in an exchange.
No, current Amity goes by Sams, comes around in front of Sams, it comes up to the second roundabout. And then it will continue north.
Coming from the other way. So we're saying the same thing.
Okay.
We're just coming from different directions.
Right, I'm driving the other way.
I'm coming from Sams and I'm coming from furniture row.
Okay, is that called Exchange Boulevard now, the, the new road?
Uh, which is another confusing thing. It, it's kind of shown that way on some maps and I think maybe some.
Exchange Boulevard. I saw it the other day.
So that's another good reason to change it, but.
So now that makes a little more sense to me, why you would take that part out and name it something else than it did.
I mean, it is the natural continuation of the current Amity from the south to catch back up with it again on the north.
Would, would y'all like to hold this in committee?
Yes.
And have some public input.
Have some public input, okay.
I make a motion to withdraw.
To holding committee.
Hold it, holding committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to holding committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Uh, let's see, that's going to put us down to number six then. Mr. Garrett, correct me on this, but would that mean this is now going to be ordinance 104 since we did not? Okay, thank you. This is an ordinance to rename a portion of McNutt Road. We're going to do this again. Uh, the portion of the road is from Donald Ridge Road to Dave Ward Drive. And the proposed name is Old Military Road. And, um, we have an ordinance to read for this and it's, this one is ordinance O-17-104.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, council, back to you.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? To rename a portion of McNutt Road to Old Military Road.
How many addresses are we going to have to change their name?
How many people?
It's whole trailer park.
We've been sending letters, haven't we? Yeah, we've, we've been sending out letters to notify people.
How many, you remember?
Doesn't look like that many. Trailer park's on the interior.
Well, the trailer park right now is all addressed off of McNutt, so all of those will change. They should use their interior addresses, but over the years it was done as McNutt.
They might not should use it, but I bet they do use it.
So do we need public?
Again, confusion because we have currently two McNuts. We have the short segment and then we have McNutt that starts at, and, and the orange should have gone all the way basically to the Donald Ridge Road intersection. That's where it would really start from, that intersection, which is now Old Military Road. I mean, it basically started going back to building the, or improving Old Military Road down at the school, the new school. And at that point, we created a new curve in the road. And it continues north all the way to Dave Ward Drive. So we need to figure out, what is this? Is this McNutt or? So, and, and looking at this, um, talking with others and Engineering Mayor's Department, we decided McNutt would make most sense to go from Dave Ward down to Old Military. Oh, excuse me, McNutt. Old Military would go from Dave Ward all the way down to the current Old Military at Donald Ridge Road. And a short segment would become McNutt.
Okay, I just, I want to say a little something about this. This has been, when I used to work at my other job, this has been McNutt Road forever. See what I'm saying?
It was, but it didn't connect Old Military like it does now.
Regardless of the connection, this, this is considered McNutt Road there. And I don't understand why you want to change it because, for what reason?
To try to make most sense of driving down the road and all of a sudden the name changes and you're still on the same road by all appearances. That's why.
But you run into that all the time and by the same token, you got a lot of people there that's going to have to change addresses.
You go from McNutt to Old Military in about 30 seconds.
Yeah, one mile. There's no, no change. You just drive and you don't know the difference. Basically, all of a sudden, the name is different.
Mark had a good point. Why, why don't we, why don't we, we name it? Why don't we have McNutt come to that intersection of Donald Ridge and Old Military? Just have it continue to there. I mean, we have.
Well, it could, and then that's what it's doing in essence right now. But then we have the other little short segment that's named McNutt and we need to give it a name.
Make it, leave it McNutt.
What about Ferris Road? Ferris Road stops at Dave Ward and on the other side of it, it's a different name. Are we going to start looking at all of them?
That'd be great if we wanted to change them all the way up and down. We, that'd be, hey, I'm there. That'd be excellent. But I don't think we have the stomach for that.
I do, I do want to.
They don't have any population. They just don't have any population.
I do want to point out that whenever we change a, a name of a street, it affects people, it affects everyone's record keeping. It affects your checking account. It affects everything. So anytime we change the name of a street, we really put it on the citizens to, uh, have to make a lot of changes in, in, in their records and, and their banking and everything else.
Well, applying the same logic with the previous agenda item, we should probably hold this in committee and let people have some input. Some time for input.
You going to make a motion to that?
I make a motion.
We have a motion and a second to hold this in committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Back in your court, Mr. Patrick.
Is that correct? We're going to get to 104 here in a minute. Mr. Hawkins, is an ordinance to rezone property from, our, at 2307 Stout Street. From R21, I'm sorry, from R2 to MF1. Uh, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on the 18th of September. And at that time, the commission voted eight to two that the request be forward to City Council with a recommendation of approval. And we have an ordinance to read and it is the magical O-17-104. Third time is the charm.
Mr. Wilcox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Bo Wilcox, 711 Locust is my office address. I'm here on behalf of, uh, Mr. Pagaya, the property owner. Um, we had a, a very brief presentation before the commission the other night. Uh, in your packet, you will see sort of a, what I think is probably the most useful thing, which is to show an overlay of this property and the surrounding properties, uh, that are, that are involved here. Uh, Mr. Pagaya's house is actually at the corner of Stout and Meadow Lake Drive. Um, and, uh, as I told the commission the other night, this is a little bit of asking for forgiveness rather than permission to some extent. He had initially asked, uh, put in a request for a permit to build an accessory to this house. Um, he was proceeding with construction, uh, decided he wanted to connect it to the existing structure. And unfortunately, you can't just do that voluntarily, so he ran into a stop work order on it. Uh, at this time, he has complied with that. He's, he, he has acknowledged that it was a mistake on his part and a misunderstanding about what he could and could not do. Uh, Mr. Pagaya is, uh, not a native, uh, from, uh, not from here. And so I had to sit down with him and then, and explain to him some of the ramifications of what had happened. And we had actually spoken with Kenny McCollum with code enforcement about what do we do here? What's the solution? And it was Kenny's suggestion that we go ahead and proceed with a rezoning request here. Because the effect of what Mr. Pagaya is doing from a construction standpoint is he's expanding the existing house and it's going to become a, from a, going from a single family unit to a multifamily unit. Um, right now, it is not completely finished out, obviously due to the stop work order. However, it has been plumbed. I think it's got. It does have electrical, correct? Or it's, it's not on yet, right? So he's at a point where he's, he's, he's framed up some things. He, and, and because of his intentions with the property, he sought a rezoning, like I said, somewhat after the fact. But by no means he was, he's not close to completion on it either. Um, if you look at the surrounding properties, of course, everybody I think here is familiar with Meadow Lake and Stout and what that, uh, area of the city looks like. There's a lot of you, different types of zoning classifications in the immediate vicinity. Uh, you have an apartment complex directly across Meadow Lake. You have multifamily and single family along Stout Street. On the opposite side of Stout Street, you have a storage facility. And then, of course, you have some mixed use, commercial type establishments nearby too. So from a zoning perspective, um, and, and from what the, uh, Planning Commission dealt with the other night, uh, their issues were, well, it's not inconsistent with surrounding zonings. And, and as long as he, you know, continues to abide by the stop work order, we're okay with it. Um, they voted eight to two. I think a couple of, were, were in opposition because, again, this was coming a little bit after the fact and we concede that point. One issue that did come up during the, um, Planning Department's investigation of the situation is, is that Mr. Pagaya, the, the structure as it's framed out right now at this moment, uh, does encroach upon the setbacks. Uh, he's a little bit over, I think, in one area, on one side, two feet, maybe three feet on the other. It's not a, not a major one, but it would require a variance request. And so we're cognizant of that and we're planning to petition for a, a variance on, on the setbacks as well. But we obviously wanted to go follow through with the rezon request first. And if it is approved, if you all find it to, to be, uh, acceptable and approve it for this usage, then we will come back and, uh, and go through the process of getting the variance as well. And, and hopefully would be successful in that regard. And I'll entertain any questions.
Let me ask a question. Is, is he building it himself or is he contracted?
He is building it himself.
Okay, well, I, okay.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, I, I should have made that, when you said that sort of. I know you said that in a sort of rhetorical sense, but I kind of, my gut instinct was to answer it because I'm a lawyer and I like to hear myself talk. Yes, he, he's building it himself and handling all, all the, all facets of construction. Uh, Mr. Pagaya actually did live on, uh, the western side of town over on Eve Lane and has, uh, decided to sell that property. His wife passed away several months ago. And so he's going to live in this property. And he's got some additional family members that may rent out or some other potential tenants. Uh, it's a nice older home. Uh, it's in very good shape. Uh, the work he's done so far is very, you know, uh, very nice and very much up to code up to this point. But like I said, once the stop work order came into play, he contacted me and I've represented him and, and, uh, his, uh, late spouse on a variety of things in the past. And he said, what do I do? And I said, well, the first thing we need to do is, uh, go to the appropriate city officials and see if we can get approval on something like this. And secondly, uh, we need to, you know, uh, make sure that we go through all the proper channels. And, and the rezoning, I think, is probably the best mechanism here. Uh, Brian and his review of it and his office's review of it basically gave a no recommendation on it one way or the other. They kind of left it in the commission's hands and the commission, uh, voted, fortunately for us, eight to two in favor of approving the rezon.
I, I agree. I think it's more in keeping with what's going on in that area anyway.
Yeah, I'm fine with it too. I do have a question though. I'm assuming, did, did he get a building permit?
Did you get a, did you get a building permit? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, yes, and you're fine, you're fine. Does our building permit not check to see that they can build what we told them they could build?
Well, in a sense, that's why we're here, because the, the building permit was issued actually for a separate structure. They weren't supposed to come together. The two houses weren't supposed to come together. One was supposed to be more of a mother-in-law quarters. And when the inspectors went out and saw it, they were like, well, this is not what was permitted. It came together and the house became one, basically. And with that, then we had the setback issue and it becomes a triplex in essence where it was a home and a, um, mother-in-law quarters before.
Okay, very good.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption?
We have a motion and a second to move for adoption. Any further discussion?
I, I can't let Mr. Wilcox get by without this.
We're going to have some fun tonight?
Well, I, I thought about it, but if we, if we do this once, everybody else can come in and say, I didn't know.
I understand that there's the, the potential for that. I understand that, you know, when you get a situation like this, when somebody has, um, commenced construction, um, and done so. construction and done so in a way that deviated clearly from the way that it was permitted, that you may have that issue. I would hope, in a scenario like that, for starters, that the goodwill, if you will, of what that homeowner or property owner does after the fact is reflective upon, you know, an effort to make things right. I think that obviously, in certain circumstances, you may have some people who take advantage of that and don't even bother to come see you guys at all or the commission. I think once the stop work order was put in place and Mr. Pagaya came to me and we started talking about it, because I'll be honest with you, he showed me the plans that he had initially put in the request for. And I said, Abraham, this is a great idea. I think it's not going to be a problem. It's an accessory building. As you all know, the accessory is limited to, and Brian can correct me on this, 900 square feet, I believe, in a... So, yeah, because of the square footage of the existing unit. And I think that Mr. Pagaya, again, not being from here, not being familiar with all the protocol, he deviated from that. I think it was unintentional, and I think it was, that was the kind of thing that, fortunately, inspectors caught it and told him, you can't proceed in this, along this path. And so, once that occurred, and he and I had the discussion, I said, let's see if we can, you know, rectify the wrongs here and go the right way. So to your question, Mr. Hawkins, I understand the worry about a slippery slope. But quite frankly, and I knew that you were probably not just going to routinely vote without trying to call me on the carpet. So my rebuttal would obviously be that more of these people who might try to take advantage of y'all's kindness and goodwill would hire lawyers to help them through these situations.
I just really...
Mr. Shaw agrees.
I really get concerned when I see you and Mr. Shaw in the same room at the same time. I start looking for the cracks in the ceiling.
Well, this was the second week in a row that he and I have obviously been on a city board agenda. And for the second week in a row, I get to go first. And hopefully, y'all's mood is not bad enough that he comes into any problems because then I'll hear about it tomorrow.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Hawkins.
I was voting for it anyway, yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye. Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
We're greatly appreciative of y'all, thank you. Have a good evening.
We finally got through with ordinance 104. The next item is ordinance to rezon property at 1517 Caldwell from R2A to O2.
Before we go on, was there a mercy clause? Do we need one if he's going to start building again? Mr. Wilcox. Bo. Do we need a mercy clause? Is he going to start building immediately?
No, because again, because of the setback issue.
Okay.
Oh, they got to do that again.
We're going to have to petition again, republish. We'll probably be seeing y'all again within a few weeks on the variance issue because that's going to have to be rectified. Unless he...
The variance will stop at the planning commission.
I'm sorry, correct, yeah, that will, you won't get, you all will not get to see it, but...
You'll have a pleasure again, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm very sorry. But I may come just to torture Mr. Hawkins nonetheless.
Thank you.
And again, the next item is an ordinance to rezon property at 1517 Caldwell from R2A to O2. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission on September 18th. At that time, they voted nine to one to send this city council with a recommendation of approval. And we have an ordinance for this item, it's O17105.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would anyone like to speak publicly for or against this?
I'm just going to say, my name's Jan Clark, and I'm the one that's doing this. This property has been in our family since 1888 when it was built. This is my cousin, Bill Wilson, and I'm buying it from him. He's the owner. And we want to turn this into O2 quiet office. And we met with this historic district last night in their meeting and got everything passed through there that we had planned to do. So we plan to be good neighbors and...
What are you putting there?
My hope is to move, I'm a real estate agent, and my hope is to move my office and part of it and then be able to lease out the other part of it. If that doesn't work, then it will probably be 2,000 square foot quiet office places.
I'll make a motion for adoption.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezon property located south of Lower Ridge Road, immediately east of Sun Valley Estates. It presently is zoned A1. The requested zoning is a PUD. And this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their September 18th meeting, and the commission voted nine to one to send this to us with a recommendation for approval with some conditions. And those conditions, there are eight of them, and they're listed below. You can take a look at that.
Actually, I think there's 15, there's more on the back.
Sorry? Oh, I did not go to the second page, I'm sorry. There are 15 conditions. Thank you, Ms. Isby. I appreciate that. There are 15 conditions, I will not bore you with those, Mr., I'll leave that with Mr. Wilcox if he were to come back and... Mr. Shaw will do it.
Actually, Frank, we were going... I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Shaw.
I just really like to get Bo up here because we don't ever see Bo. Mr. Shaw, would you like to come and talk?
Actually, Mr. Shaw, I was going to let anyone talk.
It's an open invitation.
He's going to let anybody else talk.
I was going to let anybody talk besides you, but you know, come on.
Well, we have a, we have an ordinance, it's ordinance O17106.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shaw, I was not shortchanging you by any stretch of the imagination.
Thank you so much. The good news is I don't have much voice left tonight. I've been talking all day, so I'm going to try to be brief. Frank Shaw, 1315 Main Street. And I have purchased the Matthews property on Lower Ridge Road. It's where EA at Mary Alice lived, and Steve and Robert in Maryland grew up, if you knew them. They're all friends and cousins of mine, and I bought this property some time ago. And we're basically trying to do an R1, it's an R1 project. We're doing this a PUD for three reasons. We're going with basically the 6,000 square foot lot that has been, I think, recently changed. That's about what we've got on all of them. And we need to go to a 35-foot right-of-way instead of the 50-foot right-of-way. The street will be the same size, 27-foot street, but reduced right-of-way because of the reduced lot depth. And then that also requires a little bit of a reduction in the building setback. But we have 30.62 acres, 2.4 acres of that is on your plat as commercial. That's number 13 on the staff suggested conditions. At this time, we're not asking for any zoning change on it. It will, I guess, remain either, Ryan can help me, either a no zone or remain agricultural. We don't have a proposed use for that yet. I've not approached anybody about putting any commercial enterprise in there nor do I have a plan for it. I just think that's too close to Lower Ridge Road to build on at this time. So we backed up, well, two acres back and then started with 147 lots. If you'll notice on there, there's one thing I'd like to show you. If you look on your plat, it's, this is a pretty small copy of it, but going due south, there, we have a sewer easement that we have gotten from the state. That's, I believe, state property. And it goes right back up against McKenna Cove, which we adjoin on the south side. That sewer easement will take us directly to Theodore Jones Elementary School. And what we have proposed in here is a 20-foot walkway. You look at the south street going due south, and we haven't gotten school approval and we haven't gotten state approval. But if we can get that, we're going to put a walkway through there to the elementary school, which will allow the children to walk home. It's not that far through there. Yeah, right. It'll come right out in the back of their parking area. We've not, I've not approached our superintendent about it, and we have the utility easement from the state, so Conway Corp tells me. So basically, what we want to do is improve the top of, the easement will be there and just improve the top of it with some sort of walkway. So our lots are, for the PUD, now, you're looking at a 6,000 square foot lot, and a lot of the lots are 6,006 square feet and right at the 6,000 square foot minimum for an R1. The only reason we're going PUD is so we can have these conditions put on us, and y'all can tie us up as tight as you want to, okay? And of those 15 conditions, number 13, we're not asking for that change. But numbers one through eight, I recently did a rezoning and a PUD for some clients of mine on South Donaghy, and I helped them come up with these eight conditions. And so when I did, I guess Ryan thought, well, if you're going to put them, help those guys come up with it to put on their property, you should do the same thing on yours. And that's what we're doing. Those are exactly the same seven conditions that we put on a project down by Mr. Jones's house on South Donaghy. Sir?
Don't remind me.
Don't remind you. Well, this is a long way from your house, and I'm not asking to change any street names.
I thought your voice was buzzing.
Well, I'm done.
Are you doing, you say you're doing a commercial note in that development?
Well, that front 2.4 acres, Mary, if you look, the piece to the left, there's a little zag out of the northwest corner. And my good friend Steve Matthews, who owned a lot of this property, that's where his house is, and he kept that. And then across the street is just open, which was their garden area. And we didn't plat that for residential use because I think Lower Ridge, and I think you might agree, is so busy that you don't really need to build a house right up on that street because it's going to be wide. So we called it commercial, and we're looking really, in my opinion, something like a neighborhood shopping area, a Dollar General or, you know, I don't think Walmart would be interested in that parcel at that size, but something like that. But I don't have anything on the burner for that, so I pulled it back.
And that's not part of this...
Yeah, I need to clarify that in a little bit.
Sure.
The memo went forward with that 13 in there, although it wasn't supposed to, because at the meeting, what the planning commission passed on 13, condition 13, was a desire for a no zone, basically. And if you remember, when Chick, well, Walmart Neighborhood Market on Prince Street came in initially, they did a PUD, and there were still some ideas, contention going on about what would happen with the lot that has now become Chick-fil-A out front. And there's some precedent, is what I'm getting at. In that case, the commission and council ultimately chose to not zone that lot for now. So essentially, that's the same thing here. And the wording should have been on 13, something like, the 2.4 acre plus or minus lot in the northeast corner of the PUD with 380 plus or minus feet of Lower Ridge Road frontage shall be given no zoning district classification. An amendment to the PUD shall be required in order to place an appropriate zoning on that lot. That's the condition we, or actually, the planning commission desired, and that's the wording that we created in the planning department to put that desire forward, to have that basically be not zoned at the moment. So in the future, Mr. Shaw will come back and come up with a better plan. He has actually a buyer in mind, somebody that really wants to do something there, then he can bring that to y'all and then take a look at it in more detail at that time.
You okay with that, sir?
Oh, sure.
Conway Corp? This worked for you, the setbacks and easements?
We haven't, I think we're in conditions may have sidewalk. We've looked at this, and you know, we've had others with this small lot subdivision type geometry we've looked for, and we can manage it, but we have this project in other ways.
You can make it work? We can make this work? Okay, thank you.
Shaw, how many houses are you talking about? Sir? How many houses are you talking about?
Well, 147.
And this would just be a straight R1 zoning, except for the, except for the street right-of-way, which we're, I know we've done 35-foot right-of-ways before. So the lot's the same size, the street's the same size, it's just that it's not dedicated to the city. The owner gets that other piece of property that would be the extra right-of-way. We're actually 65 feet on most of our lots, which the minimum on a PUD is 60. So we're a little bigger on the width and a little, just a little shallower on the depth. In fact, we're about six feet, sometimes eight feet, well, we're about 92, 93 feet deep. We'd like to be 100, but we're 65 feet wide instead of 60, so it's a little give and take there. This is a, according to the, for some of those of you who are interested in the comprehensive plan, this is the comprehensive plan from 2004, suggests that this might be a TN designation for traditional neighborhood for a more compact neighborhood, according to the plan that I read.
Hey, what size houses are you thinking about in this?
13 to 1550, somewhere, maybe 1250 to 16, but somewhere in that area. What I did, really, I owned 10 of this acres for several years, and I bought the other 20. And I watched McKenna Cove explode this summer. It had been there for several years and kind of was dormant. And I was out looking, and I saw the rate at which the houses were being built and bought. And it encouraged me to buy the rest of the property and to build it out. Now, we've been through the, we went through the development review meeting with Conway Corp and the fire and everybody, and there were some changes that they suggested, and we've incorporated all those changes into this. If you'll notice, on the east side, there isn't a connection there to Azalea Loop. We would have had a, we would have had a fire truck problem if we hadn't had the access from Azalea Loop. We had originally designed this to have lots all the way to Lower Ridge with two entrances. The suggestion was we do one 60-foot entrance with a roundabout, and we've incorporated that into this design. There was also a suggestion at that, at that meeting that we stub into CHDC property, which is to the west, which would be Azalea Loop extended, and we put a stubbed-in street, which we didn't have originally. And the really best idea that came out of the planning and review meeting was to put the walkway south of the school, because I'd like to say I thought of that, but I didn't. And it came out of that meeting and we added it to it. So we tried to incorporate all the suggestions we've had. We've had a few residents from the neighborhood come to every meeting, and no one's really objected to it yet. So we just ask you to pass it. East side of town needs some development. I grew up on this piece of property with my friends and neighbors. I've been on it for all my life, and I'm very familiar with it.
Put a covered sidewalk down into the school?
We're going to name it the Theodore Jones Covered Bridge, if you want us to. Him and tying right to the school, that'd be Theodore Jones Jr. Covered Bridge, to be specific. We are...
You just call it Junior.
We are in need of this size home in Conway. This is going to be really good. We don't know what, we don't, I don't know what the cost is going to be. I may not be able to ever do this, but somebody perhaps will. And there's a need for the 150 to $180,000 home. We've got a demand right here near a really good elementary school with a walkway. I think it's a good idea. I'd ask you to pass it.
Right, make a motion for adoption.
Finley? I have a question for Finley. The reduced right-of-way, are there any issues with that?
Well, we have a lot of developers that request reduced right-of-way. Sometimes it's an issue, sometimes it's not. Essentially, that it allows the developer to sell the sidewalk and some of the green space, and in some cases, as lot space. And the complication is that it makes the sidewalk more expensive to build. Correct me if I'm wrong, because then you have general utilities out in front of the, I'm sorry, underneath the sidewalk, because the buffer doesn't change, the required setback doesn't change. And so now the setback moves up, and so the utilities move out kind of into the roadway. So the construction costs get more expensive. And I just try to make sure developers know that on the front end because we've had situations where we allowed it, then they said they couldn't make the math work out on their development. So that's really the, that's the only thing that concerns me.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
I have the ordinance 017106.
the. That's the only thing that concerns me.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
An ordinance O17106. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a conditional use permit to allow general retail in an O1 zoning district for property at 2545 Prince Street. This was looked at by the planning commission at their meeting on September 19th, and at that time, they voted unanimously to send this to city council with a recommendation of approval with some conditions, and that is that general retail is allowed. Driveway curb cuts shall meet development review standards, and a brick wall must be constructed at the south property line to provide screening for residences, and with those conditions, I move that we grant this conditional use permit.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would anybody like to speak for or against this?
Phil's.
Okay, so this is actually.
That was just a conditional use.
Okay, all right. Phil, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the fence issue.
Okay.
I mean, I'm having with building another fence. Two fences right beside each other. But cross by property.
Okay.
There are two issues. One is a fence. I think it's an eight-foot fence. It's a big white tall fence, and that would be kind of redundant, but one, by and where by property. The other thing is, on the deal that I got tonight, it only showed part of my property on this legal. It didn't show the other. I have a 50 by 100 foot on the very front of Prince Street. That's part of it. It was on the planning commission, but it wasn't on the city council.
It's up on that northeast corner?
Yes, sir.
Is that. I do.
About 100 foot. So, I'll make sure that's included.
It looks like it is, huh?
It does look like it is.
On the picture, it looks like it is.
Yeah, on the picture, but on the on the on the on your.
We're going to go by the original submitted legal description, so regardless of what the map says, we're. I mean, if it was submitted, we'll. It'll be included if it was in part of the original description.
Thank you. Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next up, we have our public service committee, starting with consideration to approve a bid for a water truck for the Conway sanitation department. You're not Jibba Hopper. Come on up, Jamie.
I was looking for him. I didn't see him.
Hey, Jamie.
I'm a substitute. Good evening. Dust control is required by the ADQ operating permits that the landfill has. We took the water truck to bid September 18th. They are currently using a 1978 fire truck to control dust at the landfill, and they are requesting that we accept this bid from Shipley Motor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid from Shipley Motor. Any further discussion?
17.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to. And by the way, that 1978 fire truck has fought some historic fires in Conway.
Well, maybe we can save it or make a monument. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have consideration to approve the water tank demolition by Smith Communications at Conway Station Park. Mr. Bell, Mr. Clausen, thank you guys. You're up.
Where'd Jack go? Well, I guess. I don't know where he went. You want me to start?
Go ahead.
So, we've been working with Smith Communications attorney and kind of putting this together. So, this will be the demolition demolition of the old water tank at the baseball fields, what I call, still called YBMA fields, and then there then a ground lease, at which point there'll be construction of a cell tower. It's going to go through the planning department, too. It's not really included in this particular these agreements right now, but they're they'll put up fencing and landscaping and things like that, but that'll all go through the planning department. But in essence, we worked out an arrangement by which they would. They would tear down the old tower, dispose of it, and then they would have the the ground lease. And while the ground lease may not be as lucrative as we may want it to be, demolition and cost the city anything, probably to the tune of $200,000, somewhere in that range, if my numbers are right. Anyway, we worked with Conway Corp and also I've been involved in the process.
Does Conway Corp own that little piece of property that the tower's on?
It gets into utility easements and things like that, so Brett, you don't know. You good with that?
Actually, I believe it's the city's.
It's the city's property, but with the easement.
Yeah.
Will the new tower be like really nice looking something?
I think it's going to be kind of a, like a mono monopole.
Okay.
It's going to have. We're going to have some language of the city college park or whatever it's going to be.
You want a big baseball on top of it?
Baseball.
I think they try to look at that.
Yeah.
But it's going to look a lot better and be a lot. Have a lot smaller footprint out there. We'll be able to add some parking.
That's why I was wondering. It's not going to be intrusive.
Hi there. My name's Dave Reynolds. I'm with Smith Communications at 520 North College in Fayetteville, and this is kind of an odd situation for for us in that the the arrangements all kind of worked out that we we were in the middle of this, and we've kind of been through this operation before as a as a company, in that we build and own cell towers and also at various times represent AT&amp;T and Verizon in these kind of matters. And it just happened to work out that AT&amp;T and Verizon are now are providing service from that water tank that basically is at the end of its life or is set to be decommissioned anyway. So, it gave us an opportunity that we could do the demolition on it and have that taken care of and handled properly, and then move into about a quarter of the space that the water tank previously held, put up a nice tower, you know, one of the flagpole types that are very prominent here in Conway. We build a lot of those up in Fayetteville, Springdale, Bentonville area, that are much better than that. Will be a much smaller footprint, return some of that land to city use, so they can use it as parking and things at the Parks Department. There was a. It'll go through planning, through a full conditional use at the next planning meeting, I think, on the 16th. So, we just wanted to talk with you about that and kind of tell you how we became involved in this.
How long will the demolition take?
It is surprisingly short. From the time they move in till the time they move out will take about three and a half to four days.
Wow.
Yeah. These guys, they.
Full month.
We are not doing it that way.
[laughter]
It would only take a day if we did it that way. It it's a very fast process. We have a contractor, Isler Demolitions, that'll come in and work with this, and this is all they do across the country is take down aerial water tanks. And they they'll send 15 guys and everything in the world you need, and three days later, it'll be at the recycling place.
What other ball games going on out there right now?
I think you're going to coordinate with Mr. Ibbotson and make sure that, you know, all the tournaments and everything. Fall ball's almost over, and or I guess it just started, but it's a quick season. They'll try to get something done. They'll coordinate.
Yeah. The timeframe we're looking at for this, for the construction and for the demolition of the tower and the construction of the new tower will probably be the week preceding or the week post Thanksgiving week, somewhere in there, either side of that holiday. It it all kind of depends on weather and things, and it's just a little far to nail it down, but that is the the goal at this point.
I make a motion to approve this demolition. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request to demolish the old water tower at Conway Station Park. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero.
The next one is just to kind of tag on this, consideration to enter a ground lease agreement with Smith Communications for property located Conway Station Park.
Yeah, no problem with that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero.
You need to go.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Next up, we have an ordinance authorizing personnel changes when the Conway Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Ibbotson?
We've had some movement in our department, and it's just a matter of doing some reorganization with a reclassification of a couple of positions with no effect to our budget.
Make a motion to waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
That is 107, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Next up, we have an ordinance accepting and appropriating grant proceeds from the Central Arkansas Planning and Development District received for the Conway Emergency Operations Center. How did Chief Spradlin get out of this tonight? Chief Winner?
Chief Spradlin tonight.
Chief Winner and Chief Spradlin.
I'm Chief Spradlin. And this one is where we we got our money. The mayor signed the grant agreement, and all y'all have got to do is approve the ordinance, and we will turn it over to Jamie and Lloyd Smith, and they can get started on getting a group together to pick out all the stuff and start doing our procurement stuff.
Make a motion that we waive the readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Make a motion for adoption along with the emergency. Just just the emergency center. Second.
Motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Emergency center.
Okay, I'm sorry. I miss her. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
The O17108. Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes seven to zero. This is really. That's really going to be a nice thing.
Mm-hmm.
And next up, we have an ordinance accepting and appropriating grant funds from the American